Welcome to the Southbridge Town Council Meeting, Monday, January 8, 2024, 7:00 PM. Again, council chambers. First agenda, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which this stands, on the nation under God, indivisible, with the faith in justice and for all.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, roll call. Room Secretary?
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Shinier.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Absent.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
Counselor Rivas.
Excused.
John Jovan, Town Manager.
Yep, we have a call. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, considering and accept the Town Council meeting minutes of Monday, December 18, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
At this time, I entertain a motion to refer or to postpone till the next meeting, whichever the flavor is.
So moved.
Does the motion by Counselor Adams?
Second.
Second by Counselor Daniels. All those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, Subcommittee Report, Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Through you, we had a meeting on January 3, and Agenda Items Number 10 through 14 will be discussed this evening.
Moving on to Education Human Services, no report at this time. Moving on to General Government.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had no meeting and no meeting scheduled, but we'll probably anticipate one this month. Thank you.
Moving on to Planning and Development, Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had no meeting in the recent past, however, there is one scheduled for early next week. The exact date to be determined.
Moving on to Protections of Persons and Property, Counselor Shinier.
No report, and we'll be scheduling a meeting in the near future.
Moving on to Chairman's Announcements. I'll make it short. I would just like to thank the Department of Public Works on a job well done on a very difficult storm. It carried on for most of the day, eight inches it dropped, another two later, and with the streets and being shorthanded, I think our DPW Director and the staff did a fantastic job for the first snow that we've had in who knows how long. I'd just like to comment on an incident that happened at Southbridge High School. There was an altercation at a basketball game, and I think the Southbridge kids were online. I guess there was a lot of discussion on what happened. Some people jumped to conclusion, I think the Southbridge kids were fine, they stood up for they were being attacked by another student from another team. Southbridge students stood up. Everything was under control. I think some people in our own district jumped to conclusions to chastise the Southbridge athletes unfairly. I think the Chief of Police, and this is my point, when you have a guy like our Chief Woodson, he took the film and looked at the film and broke out the film and then commented on what really happened instead of letting the room mill run rampant. I think the Big Path Superintendent went off the air on it and so did everybody else. I would like to thank Chief Woodson for a great job on that, how to handle something that really wasn't factual, but it took off like wildfire, and then after he put the fire out in one sitting. Good job, Chief. That's it for me. Moving on to Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to?
Town Manager.
Oh, I skipped the best part. Town Manager's announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Again, I also like to thank the job that the DPW did this weekend. As we know, they're very short-staffed, and they still got the job done, and they did it well. I know there were some people out in social media land that had some concerns about sidewalks, but the first job of the DPW is to make sure that the roads are clear and that our kids and staff can get to different places and citizens can get to employment, and they continue to do a great job. We will have some challenges this week, rain and wind coming later in the week, so if you have any areas that need to be cleared out, make sure you do that around your residence so that we can keep an eye on flooding and all that. I think there's about two and a half inches of rain coming, so as usual, our DPW and our public safety will do the fine job that they continue to do. Just want to continue to update you on the Henry Street Project. That is continuing. They had completed pulling the field lights into the new pole and backfield. They've poured some sonotubes, and this week they will be taking delivery of windows, building the stairs landing, and get the rough building inspection and start insulation. Project keeps getting pushed out, and that's due to supply chain issues. Now they're looking at a completion date of February 28, '24, with the exception of paving, which would be done in the spring. So all indication is that project will be completed for the start of the softball season. Regards to some budget issues, the Governor today announced that they are doing 9C cuts in the amount of $375 million. Right at the moment, municipal and school aid accounts will not be affected. I met with our new Finance Director, Treasure Collector, who started last week, and we'll be working with the Finance Team in reviewing our current fiscal year budget in order to make sure that we're in good standing for the remainder of the year. Should be developing a memo to send out to our department heads. At this time, we are not recommending any freeze or stops on hiring key staff positions. Regards to retirements, we had a retirement, Anna Smith, who's been working in our Department of Public Health, she's been the solid waste agent, will be retiring effective February I wish Anna the very best. The timing is kind of tough because we're moving into curbside collection enterprise fund, and she has been an integral part of developing some of the paperwork, the programming on that, so we are in the process of transitioning her knowledge of not only the landfill and the operation of the landfill, but the curbside collection until she leaves, and we're working with the Department, Director of Public Health. But I do wish her the very best and thank her for her service. Many individuals, including counselors, tonight were at the final walkout for Lieutenant Gary Peck. I think that's a credit to his service to this community. There had to be at least 100 individuals there, I believe, to wish him the best and thank him for his service to the town. Regards to resignation, Denise Clements has resigned from the Cable Advisory Committee. Want to thank her for her service to that committee, especially in the work of the renewal of the contract. Regards to the Community Center, we had asbestos work completed last week, all the air quality testing was completed, the facility is back open. Now we'll move to, upon approval of the ARPA funds later in the meeting, if approved, we'll move forward with the completion of the heating repairs, along with our School Department and Department of Public Works. Regards to the Animal Control Shelter Building Committee, we'll be holding an organizational meeting scheduled for this week, January 11, '24, at 6:00 PM in the Rice Conference Room. At that meeting, they will select a Chair and a Vice Chair, review the scope of the project, and develop an action plan on moving forward. And finally, I did have a meeting up at the airport earlier this evening. They're going to be sponsoring, there's going to be a sponsored Aviation Expo Show on May 4 between the hours of 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM. All donations will benefit the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation. From all accounts, it looks like it's a great program, and part of the conversation with the Airport Commission tonight was to make sure that there was the recent change in the LECI at the airport, they would hope that we could get an RFP out as soon as possible to make sure that they have a vendor to operate the diner, and we will work closely with the Airport Commission to try to get that out within the next couple of weeks and select a new individual to run that operation. I think that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Just a quick comment, Mr. Town Manager, I want to just say what was impressive about this storm, I plow, I'm out there 24/7. For the first time in my life, I saw the Town Manager driving around the streets during the storm, and I saw a DPW Director, Rich Minoy, in a plow truck, and that is just a little different. Everybody seems to be rolling their sleeves up and getting involved in this storm, and I thought it was just a breath of fresh air. I thought I was seeing things, you know, there was a lot of whiteout, so, but no, Jovan, I commend you on that, and Rich, thank you very much for actually not forgetting where you come from, you usually start out in a plow truck. Okay, if there's nothing else, there are Town Manager's announcements, moving on to Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the council on any issues not on the agenda tonight? If there is nobody, we'll move on to presentations. We have no presentations at this time. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, vote to reappoint Theodore Tetro as interim Building Commissioner, effective immediately until June 30, 2024. State Ethics, Ingrid Standing.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Shinier, seconded by Counselor Montigny. Discussion, Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. As you're aware, that in June of 2022 approximately, the town did not reappoint the Director of Inspections. Upon that, former Town Manager Michael McCall had had some discussions about how to handle the inspections department and a building commissioner. By law, we are required to have a designate, an inspector of buildings or a building commissioner. Ted Tetro, the building commissioner from the town of Webster, was appointed by the Town Council on July 11, 2022, as the interim building commissioner with a term of six months. He was sworn in by the Town Clerk in July of 2022 and served and continues to serve till today. However, in reviewing the records, the actual appointment had not been reappointment, and as such, I wish to make sure that we are current and bring him as the interim town building commissioner until for a six-month period. I've also met with the State Building Inspector Dell Reynolds, reviewed the status of our department, and she confirmed the information that she had had with Town Manager McCall relative to having an interim or memorandum of agreement with a building commissioner. I've also met with Ted and also met with Assistant Building Commissioner, Local Inspector Mike Julian McGodin, the department, in the direction that we should be heading into an oversight of the building department. Those conversations have led to a development of what that department should look like, and through budget meetings, we'll be addressing how to make up that department with a full-time building commissioner and a local Assistant Building Commissioner slash Building Inspector, utilizing some CDBG funds that we have for a local building inspector and some local fund. So my request at this time to make sure that we are compliant with the law and make sure that we don't have any issues with any liability on behalf of the town of Southbridge, it's my recommendation that we reappoint Theodore for the six-month period of time as the interim town building commissioner.
Discussion. Mr. Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So today, I did ask your office about this appointment, and it was an 18-month since we appointed him back, as you said, July 2022. So it was a six-month appointment, it should have come up in January 2023, so for this full year, we did not reappoint him, and my question is, how have we been paying this person if we did not reappoint him?
Town Manager?
He has never sought compensation from the town, so he's been doing this on a voluntary basis, is serving as the interim building commissioner.
So at the July 11 meeting of 2022, this was an agenda item that was brought, that was asked to be put on the meeting by Counselor McCall, and he said at the time that Mr. Tetro would work at his Webster rate. So that's not true?
He has not sought any compensation.
He's decided to waive that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 10, vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Thomas Kubik as Maintenance Man Equipment Operator, MEO, as recommended by DPW Director, effective immediately pending successful completion of medical screening and state ethics.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Shinier, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion, Town Manager? DPW?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. It was four to zero, actually, yeah, it was a four to zero vote, unanimous to bring him aboard, recommended to the Town Council. Thank you.
Town Manager?
Yeah, Mr. Kubik is here this evening with the DPW Director. He is highly qualified for this position, and will start tomorrow upon this successful appointment this evening, and we look forward to adding him to our staff.
Any further discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Mr. Kubik, would you like to come up and say a word?
Hello, I just want to say thank you for your opportunity, and I'm excited to come aboard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 11, vote to approve $50,000 in ARPA funds for upgrading the Community Center kitchen, and the distribution of such funds will be overseen by the Town Arpa Administrator.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion in by Counselor Shinier, seconded by Counselor Adams. Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, as you know, we've, this is, we took a break for a little bit of putting these funds back out there as things were moving along within the town itself, but Town Manager brought this aboard with a lot of other counselors who were in favor of helping to upgrade finally our community center slash our senior center, rebuilding its kitchen in there and doing it the right way, and so look forward to having the Town Council vote to approve this this evening. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 12, vote to approve $50,000 in ARPA funds for the upgrading and repairing of the HVAC system in the community center, and distribution of such funds will be overseen by the Town's Arpa Administrator.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinier, seconded by Ortiz. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. ARPA Committee recommended unanimously to bring this up in favor of, now this is for the HVAC system within the community center itself, rebuilding and repairing it, and another step in the process of reclaiming that community center for the good it does. Thank you.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 13, vote to approve $15,000 in ARPA money for the Launch, Grow, and Thrive Southbridge course through LABOS, and distribution of the funds will be overseen by the Town's Arpa Administrator. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Montigny, seconded by Adams. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, this was, we discussed a lot about this with the President of Labos. This is a course, and we, originally it was requested about $100,000. The individuals in here that are part of the ARPA Committee had a great discussion about it, and we had recommended at this point in time $15,000 because of the shortcomings of what we have left in the ARPA funds as well. So this is some of the things that we had recommended based on the fact that this course was to be branched out quite a bit. We did, some of our recommendations was to make sure that it's for the residents of Southbridge here, and the purpose will address economic challenges here in Southbridge with the residents, including recent immigrants and marginalized communities, unemployment, business creation. Program has four distinct components that will work together to ensure successful businesses here through the Launch, Grow, and Thrive Southbridge. It's a start, one of the recommendations, making sure that, it was in English, making sure that all residents are welcome to this course, and I spoke both with the President of Labos, they restructured the framing of this course, and we had recommended it was $15,000 instead of the $100,000, but I think it's very well worth the investment in our community itself. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those, excuse me, Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. During the discussion at the ARPA Committee, we, you had reported that we had $213,893 left in the ARPA funds, so we gave $100,000 to the community center, we voted to give $100,000 to the fire station, that only left $13,893. So when we questioned how we were going to give them $15,000, you had mentioned that there was going to be some funds coming back.
Right.
To make up the difference. Did the funds come back?
So we did it today, I think it's $98,500.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 14, vote to open the comment period for the electric.
Oh, Mr. Chair, there was revision, Agenda Item Number 14?
Yeah, they might not have.
I do not have that.
Sorry.
Number 14, vote to approve holding currently remaining ARPA funds for the use on the new fire station. Vote.
That's my amendment, I'm going to make an amendment on that.
Okay.
You don't mind?
Go ahead.
We haven't, we haven't first or seconded yet.
So moved. Motion by Montigny, seconded by Shinier. Counselor?
I'd like to make an amendment to this, vote to approve $100,000 in ARPA funds for the use on the new fire station.
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion.
Okay, well, then.
Go ahead.
So when we discussed this, I made the motion to set aside $100,000 for the fire station. In fact, I sent an email out to you and Counselor Adams with the spreadsheet of $100,000 for the fire station. I had included my comments, and I included, this was before the ARPA meeting, I included the fire station budget, so I made the motion to give them $100,000. It wasn't open-ended. I think since I've been on the ARPA, we've never had an open-ended question. In fact, I don't think it's fair to say to the fire station, we're going to give you some money, but we don't know how much we're going to give you, so I think that we should. That was the motion that I made, $100,000, and that's what I think that this should reflect. Thank you.
No, Counselor brings up a great point. Fact is, we don't have $100,000, so it's $98,500, and when the money comes back in, we could do it to 100. So what I was going to also explain when we discussed the original motion was that we only have $98,500 at this point in time. Funds will be coming back in to reach that goal, but if I, at this point in time, I'd say $98,500. Now that, now we're going to be stuck with that amount of money, right? We have to earmark that money unless the council decides to reverse that down the road if we need another fit for ARPA funds as well. I'm in support, if you want to put $100,000, that's fine, that's not what we've got in the account at this point in time, and that was the last motion of the day that we made a recommendation, not an approval, but a recommendation, so at this point in time, I would, you know, I don't want to do an amendment on top of amendment, but I know I can do that, $98,500 left in the account. That's all right. Thanks.
Counselor?
Mr. Chairman, I.
Is that a formal amendment?
Yeah, you know what, I'll make a motion to amend that to $98,500.
Is there a second to amend down?
I'll second it.
Okay, we're going to amend it to 900, say that.
$98,500.
$98,000.
We'll take $900,000 if you have.
$900,000 would be real good. Go ahead, Counselor Shinier.
Mr. Chairman, if I may revert to Counselor Adams, I think during a discussion where some confusion came about was, we were approving or recommending $100,000, but we were also approved to make, I thought we made an approval to hold the money, because I was originally opposed to giving $100,000 to the fire station because I said, we're $4 million short, $100,000 isn't going to go a long way, but after discussion with the Town Manager and Counselor Marquetti and yourselves, I reversed my opinion and voted in favor of it, but I thought that the recommendation was going to include $100,000 and also that we hold that money back until we get a financial report about where could possibly the $4 million come from. And I know we had a lot of discussion on that because the $4 million, we talked about, you know, there was trash money, there was stabilization, capital money, and those kind of things, and we couldn't get a clear picture of where that money is. So I thought we were going to vote or recommended to vote $100,000 and put that money on hold in the event that if the town found that $4 million or some other type of restructuring of the building came about, that that $100,000 could revert back to the ARPA Committee to help somewhere along the line. Am I, am I right in that discussion?
Yeah, Counselor, you're correct in that whole thing. We wanted to put the remaining amount, which is $100,000, but obviously we don't have that, on hold, and it's going to be specifically used for the new fire station, but we also had that discussion of going, if they restructure everything, if the $4 million came in or $3 million came in, or whatever it may be, we could always, as a Town Council, take that, those funds back and utilize them for something else down the road. So you're right, we did have that discussion.
Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So like I said at the beginning here, on the previous motion, when I was at the ARPA meeting, you reported that there was $213,893 left in ARPA funds. That was your report. We spent $100,000 at the community center, and we spent $100,000 at the fire station, which left us.
Counselor Adams, I have a question.
Sir.
At ARPA Committee, was the fire station appropriation voted before or after the Labos?
It was, it was the last agenda item, so it was number four.
I don't believe so, I think it was before.
No, I think it was.
Was Labos last?
Yes.
Because we didn't have enough money left over for Labos.
My concern with the sequence of the vote was the $100,000 should be approved, and we should reconsider and cut the other $15,000.
So, can I, should I add a question? $1,500 is going to come back to the ARPA funds. It's coming back, we all know that, and on 25th, we're having a meeting. So the reason why I left it the way it was, voted to approve holding currently remaining amount, was the fact that we're waiting for the money to come back in. I understand what we recommended, but looking at the fact that we only had $98,000, not shortchanged Labos or anything like that, where it's going to be used right away, we're going to get that $1,500 back. Everything else is on hold. We're not doing any more meetings with any extra funds, we do have to earmark it, and that's earmarking it. So what I would recommend is keep it on hold right now for the fire station. When those funds come back in, if it's $15,000 we get back, it goes to the fire station unless the Town Council wants to choose it.
What is the rush to appoint this to the fire station? Why not wait until the, because we're going to have plenty of time between now and then to get the money in, then appropriate it in full, or you can vote the 98.5 and then have another appropriation to bring it up to 100,000, and it's the flavor of the council.
Correct. That's why I left it the way it was. I wasn't putting her on that, I was originally not going to go ahead and put her, even though we recommended it, it was just a recommendation, was just to hold on to until we get these monies back, and then we'd say, okay, hold the rest of these funds, but I was asked to make sure it got put back on the agenda, I said absolutely, here you go, and I put it a general, a general fund, just to basically, if it goes to 115, 120, it's on hold for the fire station. Period. So.
So motion to postpone would not be out of order, and just to hold?
Yeah.
Counselor, before you, anything, Counselor or Marquetti?
I'm not saying it's a rush, except that I do know that the fire station does need some funds for demolition work at this time, so they could have used it for that, could have used it for some other purposes if they need to. I just think that, I don't know how it went from $100,000 down to 98.5, I don't know how that happened, but.
I think I explained that to you already, multiple times.
You did.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just did it up here.
To the Chair, the number that is now solid is 98.5, and we're discussing amending it down to 98.5. Counselor Marquetti has the floor.
No, I'll yield. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Shinier?
To be honest, I left that meeting knowing that we were going to recommend $100,000 to senior center, $15,000 to this, to the Labos or whatever you may call it, and $100,000 to the fire station. I left that meeting at the end of the meeting, that's what we were going to do, there was no mention of only $13,000 going, those kind of things, that just happened tonight.
What's in front of us now in the council.
Right, it's 98.5.
Is 98.5. The council can postpone to a future meeting, it can delay this, it can refer it back to the ARPA Committee until they get their money, or you can vote to 98.5. Right now, the amendment is 98.5.
Mr. Chairman, would I be in order to make a motion to postpone action on this particular item until a future date?
There's a motion to postpone.
Seconded.
Seconded by Adams.
Has to be a date. Can't just say to a future date.
Can we, instead of a date, can I make a motion to refer this back to the ARPA Committee?
Okay, there's a motion to refer it back to the ARPA Committee. Seconded.
Seconded.
Discussion on referral. You're talking to, to Mike, am I? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Shenier?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
No.
Counselor Dow, sorry. Counselor Lozo?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
No.
Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes.
And referred back to the ARPA committee?
Very well.
Okay, going on to number 15. Vote to open a comment period for the electric aggregation, aggregation plan for a minimum of 30 days.
So moved. So moved.
Motion by Montigny, seconded by Shenier. Town manager?
Thank you, through you. As you're aware, at the last meeting, the group came forward and presented the aggregation plan to the town council. At that time, they stated that they'd like to set a, start the open comment period, which would be a minimum of 30 days. The next motion would set a public hearing on February 12th. Upon confirmation of your vote to open the comment period, those materials will be transmitted to me tomorrow from the, the group that's doing the aggregation plan for posting to the website and the materials to go forward. They just need that, the fact that this open comment period is open. So my request is to open the comment period at this time.
Any discussion? Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, through, through you to the town manager. So residents will be allowed to comment on the website, on just the website, emails, letters? How would that work?
I'll, I'll verify the other means, but the website will go live. It is actually live as it is now. There is a website, but all that information will go forward, and I'll definitely make, get that information to you so you can put it out on any of the social media pages to how they can respond and get public comments in.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Shenier.
I just want the public to know that this is not the same program being offered in Sturbridge at a local store. This is going to be something that the town is doing with this company here, and the one being done at Walmart is a totally different service. So I did get some, you know, questions about this on Sunday. Was this a, the one the town is trying to do? And absolutely not. I want the general public to realize that this is what we're moving forward, is this company here, not the one being offered in the local store. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed? In unanimous, all present. Number 16, vote to schedule a public hearing on February 12th, 2024, 6:30 PM in the council chambers on the electric aggregation plan.
So moved.
Vote by Montigny, seconded by Adams. Discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Opposed? In unanimous, all present. Moving on to 16, town manager's update on curbside collection program.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I put this as an agenda item in case anybody had further questions from the council in regards to some of the information that I will provide as opposed to going in town managers' announcements. Recently, Casella had, and the town health department has posted the curbside collection calendar that only shows collection through March 31st. On April 1st, April 1st, we will have new routes. Well, the routes will stay the same for trash collection. However, there will be no, there will be a change in the recycling. So they are working out those routes for the change in recycling. You'll still have trash collection every week on the same weeks that you currently have it. However, when it comes to recycling, the town will be cut in half, and half of the town will be done one week, and the other half of the town will be done on the following week. Those routes are being developed as we speak through Casella. And it has been working diligently with Casella to make sure that this is as seamless as possible. I know everybody's concentrating on what the rate is going to be. Currently, our assesses department, Francine, has been working very hard, not only with her duties with water and sewer, but to develop the parcel list, a number of parcels that will have to identify as to single units, two units, et cetera, up to six units. Working with the health department, we have identified several properties where there are six units, apartments, on the same parcel. So we have two buildings that are six units each on the same parcel. They are excluded from trash pickup now, and we have to have a discussion about how that will be going forward. Casella is also working on the information and the public information campaign to make sure that we get all information out in the very, very near future. We have been working with the Department of Public Works and the water department. We got impossible changes in the billing software that will have to be used for this program. As you're aware, we are using Munis as our utility billing company. We've had several issues with Munis, and we have not had a good relationship in being able to get information as to providing a solution for billing on the curbside collection. In conversations with Steve Gregoire from the water department and the Department of Public Works, they have been working on a possible new solution when it comes to utility billing software for the water sewer billing, so that they could tie in asset management and work order flow through a, a program that would do billing. In conversations with several vendors and a consultant that was brought in with Steve Gregoire and Rich Benoit, and Hannah as well, I have to give Hannah a lot of credit because she's been pretty much spearheading this development as far as getting a solution for curbside collection billing. We need to make sure that we stand up billing at least by April 1st so that we can have a quarter of billing underway. Steve Gregoire was instrumental in the curbside collection program in the last one, so he's very familiar with that. He was the one that had brought this solution to us to possibly look at our management system when it comes to utility billing and how to make it as user-friendly, because there are a lot of issues on the water sewer side that Francine deals with every day. The Collins Center is preparing the final memo regarding the proposed rate for curbside collection. Our team has been working to identify the needs of the program and to make sure that we, the rate that we set is a solid rate. In conversations with Michelle, Dean, my staff, DPW, the one thing that we don't want to do is set a rate that is too low, that we don't capture the cost that we have to have captured, and that have a huge rate increase the following year. The other challenges that we have is to capture how many individuals will possibly opt out and what that may look like. So we have a variety of different tables that we have been working with. My team, Dean, and I had worked on a table last week and have transmitted our information that we believe needs to be captured to the Collins Center for verification as to what percentage of individuals may opt out or opt in. Again, our rate is directly proportional to the number of subscribers that use the program. So that's why it's a lot of work to make sure we estimate correctly. Also, we have some assumptions in the rate that we will need somebody to manage the program that's on staff, which would be a direct cost, as well as inspectors to make sure that trash is being picked up and trash, and do any fines that needs to be done, as well as the mailing, postage of bills, the software that would be needed, and as well as the base contract. We have worked out two models on our end that we've transmitted to Collins Center that I will need some council input on as to whether we capture in the rate itself the yard waste drop-off site at Gulfwood Road in hazardous waste days. Hazardous waste days are estimated at $42,000 per event, and the yard waste drop-off is slated to be estimated at $226,125. Communications with Rich and staff is that we have to take a look at that operation that is on Gulfwood Road, because as of now, it's open to anyone that wishes to drop off. So we do not control if there's out-of-towners that come to town to drop off, or if there are landscape, small landscape companies that possibly do some yard cleanings and go and drop off, because we will be charged $30 per yard for that yard waste. So a conversation with the DPW director is that we possibly move those containers into somewhere on the complex, and then schedule dates and times that residents can go and drop that off. So the question will be, what does the council, what is the flavor of what they want us to do as whether that rate goes into those that are subscribers or keep that rate out? And we'll have that modeled for you next week. Again, we've had this deliberate approach. I know everybody's on edge about how this is going to start and when it's going to start and what the rate's going to be. I can tell you right now that the rates that we are estimating, and I'm not prepared to give any rate out this evening until we have our conversations with the Collins Center tomorrow, our rate will definitely be less than what a comparable vendor would provide in neighboring communities. Currently, Casella charges in the town of Charlton, I know on personal knowledge, due to my in-laws' house there, they would be charged $88 per month for trash and recycling pickup. We changed the vendor to Tim's Rubbish that's out there, and they're at $54.50 a month, and will definitely be less than those two individuals. Anna has done a study throughout the area as to vendors that provide trash pickup. There is not a single vendor that will service the town of Southbridge, including a local vendor, because he knows and has said, "I cannot compete with the Southbridge rate." So the question will be, when we do our assumptions and provide it to council, what is the rate that we anticipate, at least for the first year of participation? And again, that's going to have to be managed by the office and the public, and the health department, as to providing information as to where individuals drop their trash, because definitely we don't want a community that has trash everywhere. So there's going to have to be enforcement and oversight. And again, while I know it's been frustrating, it's important that we are deliberate in this approach, as we have to set a rate that's fair and responsive as well. And again, as a taxpayer, I sit here and look at this rate and know that, okay, this is sticker shock for me as well, because we are very spoiled, I guess, to not have to be paying for trash that others in other communities have had to do. I did have a conversation with the health inspector from Charlton this evening at the retirement of Gary Peck, James Philbrook. We had conversations about the hazardous waste days, and because Charlton is up against it as well because of the landfill, of Charlton's contract ending, that they do not have a hazardous waste day. So we will look at regional approaches to our trash and trash solutions. They're also losing their transfer station in the town of Oxford, and they're going to have to go and partner with Spencer. So the conversation that I had with him, and we will open dialogue with the town administrator, Andy Golis, in the health department over there, as to future use of a possible transfer station. However, we have to kick this off. So again, with all that said, I have asked the town council chair to set a special town council meeting for next week so that we can discuss all these issues and vote on the rates, so that we can get the mailers out as to the opt-in. As it is now, every parcel that is a one-to-six family will be automatically enrolled in the program, and it will be an opt-out program. That's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So I think that's good news, that it's going to be a, a pretty affordable rate for residents of Southbridge. A lot of residents have been asking me, what is the rate going to be? And I told them that you are working on that. I know the Collins Center has been working on this for quite a long time, and I don't know why it took them so long, but that's the way it is. The, the other questions I had was, is have you reached any kind of agreement on the leaf pickup program? I know there seemed to be, there was some sort of a problem with leaf pickup on, on disposal costs or something like that. Has that been resolved?
Yes. We had a conversation with Casella, and Casella is going to manage that leaf disposal as they currently do.
Okay. And then as far as the leaf drop-off at the DPW, I think that's a good idea, and I think that not, maybe not a full-blown transfer station, but some kind of a transfer station to complement the recycling, trash and recycling that we have now, because it's going to be quite expensive to drop off large objects, large furniture and beds and things at, at curbside. And there's one more thing. The, oh, I guess that's it. Thank you. I can't remember.
Any further discussion? No vote required? We're going to be moving on to agenda item number 18. Counselors forum. Counselor Daniels?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Counselor Ortiz?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just want to congratulate Gera on his retirement this evening. That's great news. Bad news for Southbridge, because he's been a staple of this community, but congratulations on your next chapter, going into the next chapter of life. And I wish you nothing but the best. You've had to deal with the, the curbside for the last four years, four years, something like that, and we really appreciate all the work that she's done. So she's going to be sorely missed. I know town manager talked to me about that, too, the other day. The, to the town manager, I, I appreciate your professionalism and all the hard work you and your staff have been doing since coming on board. I know, I know I tell you all the time, it's, you know, you've got 10 minutes, 10 minutes into five minutes in trying to get things done, but your staff has done an outstanding job. I see that camaraderie coming back into the town hall and into the other places throughout the town itself, but I think that has to do with your leadership and management skills that were sorely missed here for the last couple of years. So I, I just want to say thank you to you and your staff for all the hard work and filling those holes here and there and, and trying to do more with less. And so kudos to you and your team. I appreciate everything you've done. And DPW, thanks a lot for the, all the hard work this past weekend. It was, roads were pretty bad out there for a while. This storm kicked our butts a little bit, but thank you so much for you, for you guys spending that extra time out there taking care of us. Thank you.
Counselor Montigny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, it's great to start a fresh new year. We got the finance team on board. DPW is out working hard, doing a great job. But if we're going to keep this going for Southbridge, I just want everybody in Southbridge to be aware of what's happening at the state level. We don't have a state rep right now, because Representative Durant won a seat in Spencer to be a state senator. And there is a special election on February 6th to elect a, well, the primaries are on February 6th, but there's no Democratic candidate. There's just two Republicans running, and one of those candidates is our fellow counselor and dear friend, Mr. Dave Adams. And I just think Southbridge needs to understand how important it can be for a town to have a state rep coming from their own town and represent their town at the state level. It is Southbridge, Charlton, Dudley, and a, a small portion of Spencer, but February 6th, if you're an independent or a Republican, registered as technically unenrolled is, is the word for independent, you can take part in this election and cast your vote for the local candidate. And if you're interested in having representation from Southbridge, and since there's no Democrat on the ballot, if you're a Democrat, you can still come to the town clerk's office for the next couple of weeks and switch just to independent, so you can cast your vote for, for Dave Adams. But it's February 6th, local candidate, if you're worried about your roads, your schools, and the best way, worried about the fire station being over budget, it's important that we have state representation coming out of Southbridge, and we have the opportunity to actually very quickly put somebody in that position now. So I, I recommend that anybody do what they can to get out and vote February 6th. Change your designation if, if you care that much about your town, and please support our, our friend Dave Adams for a state rep. Thank you.
Counselor Shenier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I just want to welcome aboard our new recording secretary, Sharon. I just ask counsel to be patient with her so she can find her way. way in, uh, set up a system that works for her. Uh, if there's any problems, uh, with any of your minutes, please contact the town manager's office and kind of, you know, give her the support that she's going to need to find her own way. Second of all, on top of, uh, Counselor Montigny's, uh, the town clerk has listed the, on the town's website, the upcoming, uh, special elections, all the dates, what you have to do, uh, to go by to change your party affiliation. But most importantly that I want to stress is that Counselor Adams is going to represent not just Southbridge, but the communities that come under the Six Wister district, and he's going to serve it all. The most important part, though, Southbridge first. Let us elect a local candidate, and I ask you to support Counselor Adams in his, uh, reach for the, uh, state representative of the Six Wister district. Thank you.
Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I did recall what I was going to say about curbside, and that's, I think that during, when Counselor Adams was running the curbside, I think they, Palatier came forward. I think it was like 10%. He thought there would be about a 10% dropout on curbside.
That's what we're planning.
I would like to thank the DPW, uh, department for the snow cleanup this weekend. From what I wa- was told, that we had a lot of, uh, no-shows for the cleanup, so I think you guys did a pretty good job with short staff that you had. So, thank you very much. Also, I've had some, a few comments from residents in town who are very concerned about the recent shootings, and they wanted, I think the, what they want to know, they just want to be kept informed. They understand the police department is doing the best that they can, doing a great job trying to, uh, uh, watch that kind of stuff, but they want to be kept informed, and they'd like, uh, the town to at least let them know what's going on with regard to that, um, those incidences. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Town manager, any comment?
Uh, yeah, thank you. I, just one quick thing. Uh, beg my indulgence. I also want to thank the school department and the water department because they are our partners out there in the snow removal, um, and without their assistance, um, it's invalid, Bill. So, I, I think we also need to make sure that we, we thank those partners, um, and the, uh, that have come forward, uh, to work with us during this time. So, thank you to them as well, as at DPW.
I think the team concept has built in Southbridge with the manager and department heads and counselors, and I think if everybody stays on the same page, puts Southbridge for us, we're going to be in good shape in a very short period of time. Mr. Vice Chairman, next meeting date?
Uh, next meeting date is Monday, January 22nd, 2024, 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Thank you.
Motion adjourned.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Daniel, seconded by Montigny. All those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous? Meeting adjourned.